I'd like to --
Hello, everyone.
This is the regular meeting of Leonard Hill's council. Today is June 11th, 2018. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the flag and begin some brief conversation. My flag will be used to signify that the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I turned that off. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide the members of this council and that they make decisions that are in the best interest of this community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
That's right. Usually it's me.
We have a vote for attendance at the council.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Southey.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
For the record, the folks, Cindy Gloskop, the treasurer, Julie Berse, are present. Council received the minutes of the regular meeting in May. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections?
I just had one question on the community development block grant on the back. What was CIA? It just said, "Receive one application."
Christmas Day action.
Christmas Day action.
Perfect, thank you.
On the mowing equipment, what did we do, if anything?
And, uh, bought something?
We bought it.
We bought it? Okay.
I'll have to announce that in the report.
No, there's nothing that -- things here. How about the Clark grant thing?
I'll update you on that, too.
Okay.
Okay. Um, council has before its proposed agenda. I'd like to ask the council's indulgence and add a third item. The regional transit authority request, village request, is up for discussion. Are there any other changes?
Yeah, major.
We could do that.
Well, maybe I should change it, then.
Okay. Under accounts payable, there was a typographical error on the major fund amount is $89,651.49, not $890,681.
Wish we didn't have much money.
Yeah.
That's a big mistake.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. House support.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Council has reported the treasurer's report. Oh, my apologies. I skipped the minutes, or I didn't do the -- I got sidetracked making corrections to the agenda. So, is there any questions on the minutes? If none, a motion to approve them for the May 14 meeting would be in order.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes as presented for May 14, 2018, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Okay. Governor's report. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on the treasurer's report? If not, a motion to approve, receive, and file it would be in order.
I make a motion, we receive and file the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting.
Mrs. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hoppin.
Yep.
Mrs. Southey.
Yes.
Okay. Council has reported the accounts payable. Please remember that the correct amount is reflected on the report itself and for the major fund. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the accounts payable for May? If not, a motion or a motion to pay the bills would be in order and the amounts saved.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills paid in the general of $14,944.74, major $89,651.49, and the local $1,016.98 and zero for parks and rec. House support.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of voting. Paying bills.
Mr. Hoppin.
Yes.
Mrs. Southey.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, public comment. This is an opportunity for residents or the public to address the village council. We ask that you be brief and to the point, and please be aware that if you're here for comment on any of the other items that are on the agenda, you will have not the opportunity to do so at that time. We'd like to start off. Mr. Hart?
Well, if you try to give a vote, Mr. LaLanne.
Okay.
Mr. LaLanne? I'd like to know if the people that did the road are going to come back or if they're all done.
They're not done.
They're not done?
They will be done. They will be back next week.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Because they got a place out in front of my house where they were supposed to put some fill in there, but they took the sidewalk out and never had it.
Is Don aware of it?
Nah, I go down there.
Okay. We'll follow up on it.
And what about the -- have they looked at that down there at, um?
That catch basin?
Yeah, it's all flooded right now.
Yeah, they, uh, I've made them aware that their repairs were not satisfactory.
This is why we never reached that catch basin.
I know.
Oh.
They did work on it, but they didn't.
There's a tree up there down there that you got from the city water.
That's down there by you.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah. It's time to say for now and go through some slangs that I think are important.
Would these have been things that we've heard before, or is this something new?
Uh, there's so much new and some that's old.
Okay. Well, we're here to take comment. We're not here for discussion, so if you want to tell us.
Well, I don't need any discussion.
Okay.
No.
Well, please.
And it won't be over three or four minutes.
Great.
Our meetings run about 35 to 40 minutes, so I think we're fine with that. All right. Last month's audience comments about needing sewers and businesses in the village are what I have said for years, and it's good to hear other comments, make comments, and I thank you for speaking up. Commercial growth usually develops on the most traveled road before it develops on less traveled roads. Investors aren't stupid. Our master plan adopted in 1991 is created in a way that no new commercial growth could happen. Now, that's just my opinion. Our master plan states there was to be about 5% to 10% population loss from 1990 to 2010, but we had an approximate 20% increase. Addison Township increased about 65% or so.
That's inaccurate.
Well, that was the projection. Let's put it that way. That was the projection. Um, let me get this stuff out here. I have some goodies for this audience. Do we have enough? How many do we have? Um, let's see here. Didn't that flyer just give you? It says, "Commercial development goal number two limits commercial uses to the existing downtown." I'm not sure where that is, but unacceptable soils and small lots won't work. It just won't. On May 19th, oh, wait a minute, August 19th, 2003, planning commission meeting Chairman Blanca asked the planning commission about possibly making the wood shop block, the entire block, commercial. The response was that wouldn't comply with the master plan. Post office perk test in 2000 failed on that block and ended the pursuit for the post office. If we max out the use of existing commercial buildings on the east side of Elmwood Street, there will not be enough parking, approximately 12 spots right now for five building. That's surely not enough in anybody else's master plan. I have a solution. Maybe. I believe the solution to what the people with the main needing want is to allow property on forestry with acceptable soil for building and septic to develop it for a few new businesses. You're not going to get many, but we certainly could get some. There aren't many vacant sites like that. Most have houses which could become businesses, but then you have parking and septic may not work on these small lots. You'd have to tear down a number of houses just to get one business. Doesn't seem practical. Although it's done in Rochester, it's done in other towns. South of Bayside Street on both sides of the road meet the requirements. There is no acceptable soil on Forest Street north of Elmwood Street for septic, but there is acceptable soil for building, so you could put a building but not a septic. We need more people to pay taxes as our infrastructure is failing. Paying $20,000 yet last year for the replacement of the West Street storm drain, and this year's collapse behind the Methodist Church is a sign of more to come, in my opinion. I don't want to pay tax -- I don't want my taxes raised just to maintain what we have. We have options. We can get new taxpayers, commercial and industrial. Industrial might be difficult, but commercial won't be. We gotta have water and sewers for most industrial. Residential growth will come as people see commercial and industrial growth. Leonard will never be a large village, but we could go from 400 people to 600 and still be the smallest village in Oakland County. Now, I have a map here that shows in paint where the soils that the health department will accept. There aren't many, but there's some. Now, I'm basically showing the sand that's on Elmwood Street and Forest. This is the sand in the pink here. That's all there is. We don't have sand in any other place.
I'll say that, Dave.
I think that's it. How hard is it, Dave? Did I go over three minutes?
Just keeping track. Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council? Mr. Hart?
I don't know my brakes, I'm gonna break them in. See a belt down there in Marquette? Never mind. Good luck with my wheels, man. John Hart here, 558 here in Rochester, road, a mountain half of the road. I hope somebody figured out what the law is, depending on Rita, Mike McDonald. Hey, yeah, I read it. I'm here. All right. My concern is here about Nona. I'm a special needs person. I'm pretty proactive, and I got into it 19 years ago, and I got -- I put it on a path where I love my independence in order to maintain a higher level of life. I need to ask for things dependent on certain people, organizations. Mike, we spoke about Nona. That's why I probably go right there. When I went to a meeting last year in Oxford, and I haven't been able to go since because I haven't been driving because I developed vertigo, and I already have a hip disease. So, I haven't gone. Figured I'd ask you. So, if you look at me and you say, "Well, Mr. Hart, you need to exercise," you're fat. Well, how would I do that? You know, release the heart muscles, okay? And prepare for it. How would I exercise properly? One of the best ways is to swim and work out in the gym. I go to Auburn Hills, climb Shady, it's a great place. I get to go and swim whenever I want, work out whenever I want. My problem has been arriving, my problem with Nona, they do not want to take me there on a regular basis. I pay the same line, and in August, they're going to want, as a township, to pay them over four years, $82,000 bucks to drive back and forth over there. I have been told stories and lies, and I know they're lies. When I can call up and get a ride the very same day in the Lake Orient Rock, when they are willing to drop me off at Ace Hardware and then stop back off and take me over to the cross street to the workout gym over there, and then willing to pick me up again and take me to Myers, they make more money than I make here. They do not want to pick me up from my house, drive me to Auburn Hills, then pick me back up twice a week. They like to tell me that I'm on the wait list. So, what does that mean? They tell me, "Oh, I'm going to wait outside by Speedo. I'm going to wait until that day and see if --" and we know it's not going to happen. They like to tell me, in fact, maybe just over again last week, that we have people that call up, they work through their head. I'm sure there is, but there's people like I was doing, I want to go twice a week forever. Okay? More than 38 weeks, but they won't take me in. So, Mike, we spoke about this a while back. He said you would work better on it. Lynn said you'd work better on it, but it's not gotten any better at all. It's the same old thing. And for me, it's like, I need to stay strong for myself and for my wife. I don't need to get weaker and weaker to let my house get worse when the people here and there and the services it provided for are just picking and choosing who they want to want. Now, I've been told by some drivers, they have something right down the road here, they take OCC right down by Auburn Hill, YMCA several times a week. So, why not me? Why can't they pick me up on Monday? I said, "Ain't high on Monday or Friday or two days a week right there? Your choice. 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, bring you back." You know, do this. Very great decision. I might go on a Friday and not go on a Monday. So, it's very difficult to exercise once a week, and I'm old enough to know, 69, that there are organizations, people, they do these things hoping that you will just go away because I'm not in mainstream America. I can't just do for myself. And so, that's my type here. It's coming up again, and if they do this to me, now, I know they don't like, people that say, "Well, he's always bitching." Well, I'm not always bitching. I'm bringing things to attention that need to be addressed, need to accomplish, even if it might be a hospital, the people there are lazy, don't want to do it because it's too much work to them. So, here it is, right? And I wonder how many people out there don't say nothing because, look, part of me live over there, we go there because they get the same treatment. There are a lot of people who don't say anything. So, I thought, again, I do expect to get better treatment. When they collect taxes from every single home in Addison Township, every single home needs to get the same treatment that downtown Lickorian or downtown Oxford. That's the way it is. It's across the board, collect taxes, get the same thing over there, and it's not happening to me personally. So, I'd like to have something done as record and not me being treated like I'm sacrifice material or a baggie that doesn't need to be in the forest. I need my exercise. It's my, what's it called, my prescription for physical therapy. They don't care. I can't get through them to understand that I need to go swimming, and I'm in a wheelchair, and I need my exercise, and that's the best way right there. And it's led to hypochondria. When you start believing the saying that people just don't give a two, they won't treat you proper to anybody else, but I'm expected to pay the same tax dollars to everybody else and keep my yard up like everybody else? So, this is my first time here, so because we live in the village here, still have the township. So, do you understand my plight here, folks?
Yep.
Now, what can we do about that? Well, I can't just remember. Somehow we have to get the educated people to make a change, that everybody in Addison Township, you pay taxes, the residents, need to get the same treatment, revise the program, buy another vehicle. If they buy another vehicle, how do you change their minds and say, and educate their minds and say, "You got to go get the people out there whether it takes you an hour longer every day, they pay taxes, they pay the money, and you do get money for Addison Township." When they vote after money, I don't think they have anything on it that said, "We're only going to take care of these people, come back here." They want money there for them. So, to you and the country back there and the media, I hope we can do something about this. It's been going on, and I have been on the month of May, but opportunity, because I was on the vet market, we go swimming, and Amber said she'd get back on the regular routine first week. That didn't happen. Dr. White, that didn't happen. And Dr. Vick, he said the other day, "Got that thing well." We got people calling a month ahead of time. Well, that's what I've been doing. Pay the same good month. Sorry, my time is up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Is the problem that you're having is they don't want to go to that site where the pool is that you frequent?
No. Can I take that one, John?
Can I?
Can I take that? You can right after me.
Okay.
Because two is better than one. They pick up a man down here, right down the road, he goes OCC, right down by Auburn Hills.
Okay.
They take people, they take other places. They don't, they're taking them. They take people up there. They go get him faithfully. But me, they never said, "John, we don't want to go down there, but it takes longer." I find it.
That's Randy's son.
But my goodness gracious, I'm a taxpayer. I'm a special needs person. I'm 69. They're supposed to take care of us, but what I get is, well, people have doctor appointments, people go to work. I'm like, "Well, what am I, ground turkey?" The system is set up to help all, not just certain ones over there. So, I need my physical therapy, my treatments, I need to know with confidence that I can depend on Nona, who reflects tax money for every taxpayer in Addison. They will uphold what they, their intent was, take everybody down to those places and bring his activity without this favoritism stuff.
Thank you.
Go ahead, my duty, answer your second question, everybody.
Well, I just want everybody to understand that John has approached Nona about this, and Nona has worked hard to accommodate people with special needs, but Nona is also set up to serve, unfortunately, the highest priority in the community, or in the poor communities, which means if you live in Addison, Orion, or Oxford and need to move around in that, those three communities, that's the priority service. Anything outside of that, and I can't speak to the educational, whoever's going to school, John, I don't know anything about that. I will look into it, but it's set up so that if it's not a priority visit, like a doctor visit, or groceries, or something like that, if it's just to go window shopping in Rochester or whatever else, not discounting what Mr. Hart's saying, then that does have a lower priority. And I can't speak either to whether a prescription changes, a prescription for therapy changes that under these circumstances, but we'll continue to look into it.
See, and I've been there, I had to go into downtown Lickorian Rock and spend some hours and go take care of businesses over the place. I'd go in my wheelchair. I said, "Just get me there." But they're willing to pick me up at eight, they're dropping me up, they're picking me up at eight, dropping me up at eight, picking me back up at eight, they go beat the road there right there, well, flush, it's been through. Well, the others will get sold, they'll get you down here, take you to the next. It makes people very less small. See? And then Rochester, I've been to courthouse in Rochester a few years ago. So, they do do that, but they're there for life. But this way, "Look at me, I'm a special needs person. I'm 69, I'm a paralegal, and I don't want to be anywhere back, and I want the same service that was intended for." And I just go me out, and I have people tell me that you got to wait 14 days. On the website, it says there's a three-day and two-day thing, two days by the medical center over there. I'm like, "They know it's closed, let's say on a Monday because of weather, so what about those people that have their doctor appointments?" They just told me the other day, well, they put them on Tuesday. No, you just can't just call your doctor and say, "Yo, so you get me some blood." But I understand, but I like to be treated equally as anybody else. I'm a special, I need that. I need to depend on those who got in the business for that, you know? So, I don't need to be lied to and, you know, there's what they call common sense deduction that, "All right, if you tell me that people made appointments a month ahead of time, I've been on the schedule a month for every two days a week since last summer, see? Not stopped. So, how long has it been?" So, what these choosers that, "Well, I'm on the wait list, they don't have my room." I just told them, Wednesday when I called, the Thursday, I called that Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday off the hook. I said, "What about Friday? I'll have to call again." I'll have to call. "Look at the list now, I'm putting eight down the drum." But they wait until somebody else in there, "Look, folks, you get that money," and then I'm out.
Well, as I said, service area and the priority types of priorities vary, John, and I thought we had dealt with that previously, but I will go back and see what I can learn.
No.
And I will take your comments back to the Nona board.
Well, we didn't deal. I spoke about it, and it was problems that they would get better. Even Lynn told me, when they had an extra 50 hours a week, they'd get better for me because they have more drivers, more money. It didn't. But the activists, like I say, again, if they're taking somebody in here that OCC faithfully
I understand, yeah.
And taking some of the great, it's wrong.
We've covered that, so.
Well, I just want to refer it, going to YMCA is.
Important for you. I understand.
Yeah, and others, but why am I giving that, sir?
Okay. Anybody else care to comment tonight? If not, we'll move on to new business. As everybody, I think, or hope knows, the strawberry festival is coming up. This year it'll be on July 21st. I'd like to, I'd like to ask the council to set up the dates for closure at this time because I still have to notify the county and get some paperwork done when we do that. So, rather than wait until, you know, second week of July, I'd like to take care of it now. So, with the council's indulgence, we're asking that the same street closures, tines, et cetera, that we did last year be done this year. So, that would be East Elmwood from Forest Street East to Division Street, and then a portion of Division Street itself, North Division, will be closed, and then at this time, a portion of West Elmwood from Forest to.
Rosie Drive.
Rosie Drive. Would be, that's usually temporary. That's from one to four.
One to four.
Wonderful.
One to four, one to five.
Yeah, for those hours. Did that cover everything?
Yeah, the only thing that I was going to ask is where we close it on Division. If the county needs a little bit more because they're doing those old-fashioned games, retro games is what it's called, they might need a little bit more, so we might have to go just past that second house behind Shar's house. Yeah, the only thing that I was gonna ask is, where we close it on Division? If the county needs a little bit more, because they're doing those old fashioned games, retro games is what it's called, they might need a little bit more, so we might have to go just pass that second house behind Sharr's house.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay, because they told me that we can't, that house has told me we can't close it over there, so I just want to make sure it's okay.
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 Okay, are there any questions on the council, on what's being requested? Anybody else? Okay, is there a motion then to authorize the street closures for the Strawberry Festival on July 21st as stated?
I make a motion that we authorize the street closures as stated.
I'll second.
Any questions on motion? All in favor of the motion to close the streets for July 21st Strawberry, July 21st 28 King Strawberry Festival, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, please say no. Okay. Council, as a follow-up to last month's meeting, it was suggested that maybe we do a short and to the point village survey. Sharr and I discussed it with the other principals of Oakland County, and they thought this would be a good way to try and get public involvement and get priorities arranged. So, I'm requesting authorization to do a brief survey, and that it be printed and mailed to our residents. I think we can keep it under $200, with any luck, between the printing and the, it's not big like the newsletter printing things. So I'm asking for authorization for that, and, and capital money to pay for it.
I'd like to make a motion to support up to $200 to support a survey for the Main Street Village to canvass the residence.
I'll second it.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Maranty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yep.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebby?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The Regional Transit Authority is back for another bite of the taxpayers' dollar. They expect this, middle of this month, to make a decision on whether they will ask for a 20 mil, a 20-year millage authorization in the amount of 1.5 mils. Now, you may recall that last year, or 2016, they came and asked for 1.2 mils. Well, apparently, they've decided 1.2 mils, and since they only lost by what they consider a small margin, that maybe they can get more money and get this thing passed. They've tried to address all the criticisms, as council members, we passed a resolution closing the millage, and I frankly have not seen anything that says that anybody in northern Oakland County is going to get any better service. In fact, all of northern county is not getting any direct services from, would, would get any direct services. There's 17, 11, 16 Oakland County communities in the north half that would get approximately, are being promised a million dollars each if this millage passes. Addison Township and NOTA, the Oxford Township, we don't stand to benefit any direct services at all, and a million dollars is not enough to do a lot with. I'm sure NOTA would probably figure out how to do something with it, but they've got their service areas handled at this time, notable exception with Mr. Hurd, but there's nothing in it for North Oakland County, and really Oakland County in general. The same, basically the same fixed routes that Smart already runs, they're saying that they would have more buses every day, but they're really not looking at how many people here in Oakland County are going to change their travel methods in order to be able to take a bus to, a ride share, or a park and ride, I mean, park and ride. And people just aren't going to do that, and there's no infrastructure for that anyways. There's the park and share rides, or park and, park and ride lots are small and not very well used either. So, I'm recommending that the council take an advisory vote on this, on whether we want to encourage the RTA to ding us for a mil and a half for 20 years for, for a program that frankly, I think it's destined to failure. It's just more of the same, it's just they're throwing more money at a basic, basic problem, and it's basically putting in a rail line and fixed routes in Southern Wayne County, Macomb County, and Southern Oakland County.
Southern Oakland County.
The county, huh?
Yes.
Well, I just hear, you just spoke for everybody out here, by saying they wouldn't be interested, but you haven't spoke to everybody, so like, like NOTA, if I spoke to the rest of them, maybe they just don't say nothing, so maybe they would like, I don't need the extra spam, what I'm saying, you speak like that, you speak to everybody else, and you don't know what they all realize, maybe here...
Elbrooks Patterson and Mark Hackle, the county executives for Oakland and Macomb, have come out opposed to it, unless they allow the county, the communities like Addison that opted out of Smart 15, 20 years ago. And we're not being given that opportunity with this. They're saying, everybody's gonna pay, whether, obviously, whether you use it or not. So I'm not just speaking for myself, there is quite a large groundswell of opposition because this is, as I said, it's not an improvement, it's, it's a...
Yes, there may be a large, large number, but not the whole amount, it's like, you know, we all think, competition is good, but like, NOTA, they don't have any competition, so people just remain, they just give the same, same old service, so...
Well, that's why I'm canvassing the council, John, to find out. Phyllis?
I just want to get an understanding, is this the Regional Transportation Authority that wants this money?
Right.
So when that comes up to a vote, will this area be voting on that?
Absolutely.
But now, the Smart Millage, we don't vote on.
Right.
Because the Smart Millage is up again this year too.
Right.
But only the communities that...
But your money, if, if they pass this, taxpayers' money from North Oakland County, will be, will be supporting the Smart routes, because the RTA is bragging that it's not a redundant transportation authority, they're giving their money to existing transportation authorities to make them better. So all this is, is funneling more money to the existing infrastructure, and they are building a light rail, their, their dream is to build a light rail line from Ypsilanti to Detroit. And that's, that's...
So it's kind of like the M1 that nobody out here ever uses, that you're paying for.
Right, so we do have to vote on the regional transportation.
If, they have not decided yet, there is so much opposition at this point, that they haven't decided whether they're gonna do it, but I would not discount the fact that they would try it again anyways. It's like Richard Nixon, you know, he just kept coming back till he got elected.
So we wouldn't want to keep, we wouldn't want to prop up RTA, we want to prop them up, you know, services, just like we would monkey, prop them up, go up and...
If we, if we wanted to vote a mil and a half, an extra mil and a half to NOTA, you might get something up here. In fact, I don't say might, you will get, you'll get more. But, point is, is this, this is, you have to drive 17 miles down to Great Lakes Crossing, that would be the nearest fixed road to use, to use anything in this plane.
So that's what we money out here, we use to prop up their system, because we know that they could pay while, we got their money, but it just didn't work out.
Yeah. Yeah. These are all points that they failed or didn't make. But in their own words, they coordinate with the existing transit operators, including Smart, Detroit Department of Transportation, Ann Arbor, and Transportation Authority, and the Detroit Transportation Corporation, People Mover, and the M1 rail. I mean, it's, it's just another, I'm afraid it's gonna be another ineffective attempt to address mass transit, and it's...
Sounds like it's for bigger communities than that ours.
Right. And I don't think the services are gonna be that, that much improved, because most of that money is gonna be detoured for those areas to that light rail project, so, yeah. And that's, and that's their words. And I've got, if anybody wants to look at, you know, the service map, et cetera, that information's here as well, I'll leave it here at the village office if anybody wants to do their due diligence. So, council, you wanna, do we want to do anything at all? Is there a motion to support or oppose? Failing either, or we'll just move on?
Mike? In some cases...
Just a moment, John.
Okay, John.
If there's no motion, go ahead, John.
I'd say, in some cases, when there's nothing done, it gets passed. So, just want to clarify, if that happens, if nobody does nothing.
I, I think, I would suggest to the council that if we passed a motion that is, supports our county executive and the county's position, that communities that opted out of Smart should not be forced to have to...
Do we still have the communication that we sent for the previous attempt?
Probably somewhere.
I mean, can we just copy the same communication, more or less, and send that back as the same message?
We, we can do, I, I'm sure I can do that, but I would like to really include the, the opt-out portion, which we didn't include the last time around.
So you're asking for a new motion?
Yeah, a motion to authorize a letter of opposition to the Regional Transit Authority on the basis of previous service limitations that we talked about in 2016, and also because we're not being allowed to opt out, and our money would still be going to Smart because of this arrangement that they've come up with. That's basically it.
Okay. So ordered.
Hmm?
So ordered.
Okay, is there a motion by Mr. Hoffman, is there a support?
I'll support.
Is that Paul? Okay. Yeah, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Maranty?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebby?
Yes.
Mr. Maranty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion secured, thank you. Okay, Elmwood Street Project update. I've been told, as of last Friday, that the paving company and the contractor are both gonna be back in town either late this week, or early, more likely, early next week, to make the final repairs. So I've already got a punch list of a couple areas that we need to take a look at, and that's basically where we are. We haven't paid the last funds to them yet, and we won't until we're satisfied, so...
Mike, does that include the damage they did up front here with their backhoe? Their, their pads just pushed that concrete, or that asphalt down quite a bit.
Where's that?
Um, all the way along the curbing area here where they were...
Oh, when they, when they rolled it, you mean? Yeah.
No, when they, when they redid it this spring, they, they, they came in with backhoes, and their pads pushed the asphalt down, I mean, you can see the destruction there. I mean, it's, I don't know how you fix it.
I'll, I'll add it to the punch list, but it may not be repaired.
I don't know how you do it.
Okay. Well, thanks for bringing it up.
Do you have a question?
Thank you. Yes.
Um, there's another place, like at Geno's, in front of Edgar's, they took that sidewalk out, that one that was there in the middle of their property, and it's now just a big mud hill.
Okay.
Jean has a question.
Yes.
The, last, last month when I was here, you talked about the companies that did this work were asking so much money they wanted. But, you know, I seen Donny Irwin picking up the straw and rolling it up, throwing it away, my neighbor did the same thing, I did the same thing, all down that road. So, did you, will you deduct something for that, because they didn't come back and do it?
No, we can't deduct it because it's MDOT. MDOT pays them a fixed amount, that when they put it down, it assumes that...
They're gonna do it.
That stuff is supposed to break down, obviously it did.
It don't, that's why it's gonna...
But no, I wish it was possible, it's kind of like what the engineer said in the letter last month about, they had to be here to supervise the work that was done out here, but we chose, we paid them for what we had them do, not what MDOT required them to do. So, it's the same story.
So we picked up all this stuff, them free, basically?
Pretty much.
Well, when you started doing it, did you expect to get paid?
Huh?
When you started doing it, did you expect to get paid?
I expected the village to fix it up.
Yeah.
Well, we're not done yet, so, it would have gotten done eventually, but not before it tangled up a few mower blades, I'm sure.
That's true.
Okay, if there are no questions, I'll move on. DPW update, we did buy a new mower, scag mower from Novax, three days of use, quit running.
Oh, God.
Novax came right out, Donny called them, they came right out, swapped it, temporarily gave us a loaner, and Don was back in business, but we still have not gotten it back, so I'm not sure what, what's going on. Don's on top of it, so... Okay, there were no Freedom of Information Act requests last month, the block grant, we had no new applications, but I do want to inform the council that all the repairs were completed for 98 East Elmwood by Christmas in action, so, at home, if you look at it, where they removed the moss and lichen, or lichen?
Lichen.
From the, from the shingles, it's brown, it's a different color, but that will go away after it rains a little bit, everything, so... Okay, there's no new ordinance enforcement actions. We had a workday last month for the mill, which was a small, small workday, but we got flowers planted and pulled weeds and stuff, so, and then we worked with Don to get a handicap spot. We do have a resident that's in a wheelchair, and she used to park in front of the mill, and with the curbing in front of the mill now, she's, she doesn't like to travel on the limestone part of the trail, she wants to stay on asphalt. So we're trying to get her access as close to the paved part as we can, so, I've, I've not heard from her since, so I don't know if she's used it yet, or we'll find out.
You mean, parking by the mill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen her do it.
Pardon?
I've seen her do it.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's great. I'm glad, glad it worked. Okay, and then, Clark Drain, we've had no further communication from the Drain Commission other than they would like us to pay for a new drain, so, so that's where things are right now. Trustee Committee reports, Summer Festival Committee?
The committee is going to attend. Busy, busy.
Sounds good. Cable Commission, Sharr, anything?
Just that they are gonna start meeting every three months instead of monthly.
Okay. Are you gonna have a new schedule sent out for meetings?
I thought one was sent.
Oh, was it?
No.
I hadn't swatted out.
If you, if you, if you do see one, can you forward it to us?
Yeah, I, I did see one, and I thought it was being sent, but I...
So it's a quarterly meetings now?
Yes. And we met last month, so...
Okay. Okay, Decorating Committee?
I've seen a few flags out, no meetings yet.
Yeah, Don got some here in the flags.
Yeah.
Plating Commission?
We, we have a public hearing scheduled at our next meeting, and we're thinking of the best plan to public and the council. So we will have a meeting this, come thir, the 19th, I don't know, day, next Thursday.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds good. Right, and you're gonna handle getting the printing done?
I agree.
And you're gonna handle the printing?
Yes.
And then just work with Judy to distribute it.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. Right, Judy? Okay, Polly and Trail Management Council, it's been a busy start to the year. Tomorrow, Wednesday, there's gonna be a group of equestrians asking... Okay, Pallion Trail Management Council, it's been a busy start to the year. Tomorrow, Wednesday, there's gonna be a group of equestrians at the Leonard Trailhead doing repairs on the corral, installing water, watering buckets for the horses, and making some other general improvements, so that's always nice to have. Our well, our well check came, came back good quality for the water, the water fountain, even though it's still got a little color to it.
Hmm.
We've kind of already discussed Main Street, looks like we're gonna do a survey. Village Parks, what do we got, Mike?
Got the stain to put on the...
We got June 30th, we're not paying, June 30th? June 30th, this wham, coming out of the thing. Are we gonna do it before then?
If it doesn't rain anymore.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, North Oakland Transportation Authority, as was mentioned tonight, and also last, last meeting, there will be a millage question to renew for the North Oakland Transportation Authority on the August ballot. And then Community Development Block Grant, I think everybody received an update in their packet tonight. There's been no change or activity on it. And then Historical Study Committee, Sharr, we haven't got anything going with that, have we?
No.
I have no, I have no further correspondence. Is there anything the council has to bring forth? If not, a motion to adjourn would be ordered.
I so move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, everybody, thank you for coming.